The order. Please rise for the flag salute Chief Cahill, will you please lead us?
Much allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Indivisible, indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chief.
No problem.
The roll call, please. Mr. Kreebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here.
On December twenty seventh and on January third, official notice of this meeting was given to the press of Atlantic City, the Mainland Journal, and the Current. And was duly posted. On the city bulletin board and the city website. Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to welcome our new solicitors, Will Reynolds and Mark Demad. I don't want to be a judge base, there they are, welcome.
Thank you very much, mayor, appreciate the opportunity and the consideration.
Well, you're both. Your rep- your reputation precedes itself, so I think Vetner's in good hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So we do not have any presentations.
Open public meetings, sir.
Excuse me?
Open public meetings announcement.
That's what I, that's the open public meeting announcement I did was the one we do for the reorg. That's what I read.
I didn't hear you read it, I'm sorry.
Oh, on December twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, and on January third, twenty twenty second. Official notice of this meeting was given to the press of Atlantic City, the Mainland Journal, and the Current, and was duly posted on the city bulletin board and the city website.
Right.
That, that's the one, that's the only time we say that, other than the other one.
Agreed, I, I just didn't hear you say it, I must have missed it.
That's okay. Okay. Um, did you miss me welcoming Mark and Bill? I'm just teasing you. Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight, we do not have any department head reports, and we do not have any capital. So. Uh, for the people out there in the audience, just to let them know what we do in our meeting is our first portion of the meeting is. A, our workshop portion where we go over everything that we will vote on immediately after we close the workshop portion. So, the first thing we're going to do is, what we're going to be voting on tonight is minutes of November eighteenth, twenty twenty one, and Commissioner Kreebel, you were, you were absent then, so. Just as a heads up. Okay?
I abstain.
You'll abstain. We do have an ordinance introduction, and it's twenty twenty two dash zero zero one, it's our calendar year twenty twenty two ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Um, uh, I'll refer this to our CFO quickly to explain to the public what it means. We do this every year.
Yes, it's extended procedure for us to do this every year, regards our budget, we have, it's a cost of living adjustment is better term for, but it's basically for the rising prices. Allows us to extend the budget to meet that, and if, if we don't need it necessarily, we'll all go to surplus, um, so it's a way to build cap bank.
Great, thank you. We'll go with that commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The next is a, a list of resolutions, it's a extremely long list, it goes into double alphabets. And because this is our reorg, so this is where all appointments are made of our professional services and, um, other things. I am going to go through it, um. The Commissioner Landgraf, Commissioner Kreebel, if you want to interject, just stop me, or I'm going to just run down the list, okay?
Sounds like the plan.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. The first resolution is twenty twenty two dash zero zero one, city auditor Fort Scott and Associates. Next twenty twenty two dash zero zero two, awarding the contract for planning and grant assistance, James Urtola. Next is twenty twenty two dash zero zero three, award a contract for conflict solicitor Parker McKay. Next twenty twenty two dash zero zero four, awarding the contract for general tax counsel Hank Rovallard. Next is twenty twenty two dash zero zero five, awarding the contract for risk management consultant to Syracuse. Next is twenty twenty two dash zero zero six, awarding the contract for bond counsel to Archer and Greiner. Twenty twenty two dash zero zero seven, were the contract for health insurance broker professional benefit consultants. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two zero zero eight, award the contract for continued disclosure agent NW Financial Group LLC. Twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine, awarded contract for financial advisor. Of record NW Financial Group LLC. Twenty twenty two dash zero one zero, were the contract for our labor relation counsel, Cursio, Pepper, DeSanto, and Ruth. Twenty twenty two dash zero one one, appointing the alcohol and drug testing to Prague Company who's done it for years. Next is twenty twenty two dash zero one two, authorizing a professional service contract for police training to the Rogers Group LLC. Twenty twenty two dash zero one three, authorizing agreement with Atlantic Care for medical surveil. Lamp surveillance program for firefighters, police, and public works, and new hires for the city as required. Twenty twenty two dash zero one four, authorizing a contract for human service slash personnel consultant Cynthia Cotton. Twenty twenty two dash zero one five, appointing George R. Duck Brown for praiser for state. Tax court. Twenty twenty two dash zero one six, authorizing the contract for Jersey Professional Management Corporation and Maria Mento as temporary acting city administrator. Twenty twenty two dash zero one seven, authorizing contract for Jersey Professional Management Corporation for management consultancies. Twenty twenty two dash eighteen, zero eighteen, authorizing the mayor executing agreement with the emergency training and consultant ETC, this is for basic life support for us to have a medical director on record. Twenty twenty two dash zero one nine, authorizing the annual schedule for the city commission meetings, as well as the sun, excuse me, sunshine notice listing. Twenty twenty two dash zero twenty, designation of official newspapers, Press of Atlantic City, Mainland Journal, and the Current. Twenty twenty two dash zero two one, designate public agency compliance officer being Lisa Hand. Twenty twenty two. Dash zero two two, establishing rules of order and conduct for the city commission meeting. Twenty twenty two dash zero two three, designating bank depositors. Twenty twenty two dash zero two four, adopting the cash management program. Twenty twenty two dash zero two five. Is the twenty twenty two temporary budget, twenty five percent correct, Al? Al Stanley?
It's twenty six point two five percent, but.
Twenty six point two five percent, thank you. Twenty twenty two dash two. Six, appointing James Goss as fund commissioner and Joe. As alternate. Twenty twenty two dash zero two seven, appointing the contact person for the employment practices liability helpline with the Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, which is XL Insurance Company. Twenty twenty two dash zero two eight, appointing JIF safety coordinator Donna Peterson. Twenty twenty two dash zero two nine, authorizing the tax assessor to handle tax bills. Twenty twenty two dash zero thirty, authorizing the tax collector to charge interest on any delinquent taxes, properties that are, and sewer, after the due date for the payment of the same and ten day grace period for the year of twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two dash zero three one, authorizing tax collector to process property and or sewer tax refunds and cancellation of refund or deliqu- delinquencies of less than ten dollars for the year of twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two dash three two, authorizing the public employee bonds. Twenty twenty two dash zero three three, appointing the police custodial records. Twenty twenty two dash zero three four, appointing class three members to the planning board for the year of twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two zero three five, appointing members to the planning board for the year of twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two zero three six, appointing the Green Team Advisory Committee. Twenty twenty two dash zero three seven, appointing the Municipal Alliance Committee. Twenty twenty two. Dash zero three eight, appointing the Ad hoc Citizen Advisory Committee. Twenty twenty two dash zero three nine, appointing members of the city event or creative team of twenty twenty two, or Vetner Arts Alliance. Twenty twenty two zero four zero, shared service with ACUA Digital Media. Twenty twenty two zero four one, our EAP Services. Twenty twenty two zero four two, award a contract to NJEIT Financing for Bond Counsel Joel Fleishman. Twenty twenty two dash zero four three, appointing Margaret Pakanowski as our, Pakanowski as our tax collector. Twenty twenty two dash zero four four, authorizing the refund for water and silver overpayments. Twenty twenty two dash zero four five, self-examination of our twenty twenty two municipal budget. Twenty twenty two dash four six, waiver of fees for special events for twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two dash zero four seven, our governor's council on alcoholism and drug abuse application for fiscal grant year for July at one twenty twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty two dash zero four eight, adopting a wellness policy. Twenty twenty two dash zero four nine, promoting Joseph Walton as our captain, congratulations, as well as congratulations to Margaret on her. Tenure as tax collector. Twenty twenty two dash zero five zero, promoting Mark Franco as police sergeant. Then we will have our approval of our bills and payrolls. And we don't have discussion names, but I wait to the end of that, for the end of that.
Right.
Commissioners, yes, okay, so now we are at the public portion, public portion for everyone out there in the waiting room, this is. Uh, if you'd like to speak on anything we are going to vote on. Um, Jim will tell you what to do on Zoom and state your name and address. And speak on what we are, what I just ran through, there will be another public portion at the end for any other subject matters. So Jim, do you want to see if anyone wants to speak?
So anybody from the public in Zoom who wishes to speak on any of the items that have been voted upon tonight? Please make yourself known by the chat function or raising your hand within Zoom, and you'll be recognized, once recognized, you give your name and address, and you may turn your camera on and speak to the commission. Is there anybody out there in Zoom who wishes to speak on any of these items? I do not see anyone.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to close portion? I don't think I motion to open it, sorry. Do I have a second to close?
A sec, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order our regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion to approve minutes of November eighteenth, twenty twenty one?
Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of November eighteenth, twenty twenty one?
Yes, I'll second the motion, Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Abstain.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero zero one?
Make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero zero one, the calendar year ordinance?
Do I have a second?
Second the motion as described.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a resolution to adopt resol- do I have, do I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty two dash zero zero one through twenty twenty two dash zero fifty?
Make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty two dash zero zero one through zero five zero by consent?
Do I have a second?
Second the motion as described.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes, I can't believe I read five, fifty items, I don't know in how many minutes.
Well done. Good job, that was a lot, we didn't get to the Z, but.
So glad, so glad you were back this.
Yes, I am sorry I missed some meetings.
Well, also, thank you to, um, Maria Mento and the rest of the staff for pulling that together, there's a lot of background work there that had to be done to get that accomplished. A packet is, the packet is huge, so thank you.
It's five hundred.
Thank you, Lisa.
This is, a lot of this is on Lisa too, you know, mostly.
Yeah, I had to put my hand.
But she's.
There's a small.
She's the one that keeps it all straight and gets it in order and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa, I had to put my hand brace on when I.
It was like that thick, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you get it digitally, you don't have to print all that paper.
But I still like sandpaper, I'm old fashioned. Okay, next item, uh, uh, our CFO, um, Al, can you please give us our bills and payrolls for this period?
Yes, uh, the bill list for this period was three hundred and seventy one thousand, nine hundred and eighty one dollars and twenty one cents. And we had, uh, two payrolls from last meeting, uh, first one being five hundred and sixty nine thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars and fifty cents. And the second one being seven hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty four dollars and thirty three cents.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve bills and payrolls stated by our CFO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Um, or, we don't do our safety report, we have it listed when we have it, so skip over to that part, um. The next is commissioner comments and reports. Um, I'm going to go first for a quick second, I just want to wish everybody, oh god, stop barking. I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy new year, and we use, we do it throughout the year, but I do want to, uh, thank our team, our entire team, when I say team, I mean our team of department heads, as well as all the city employees. Um, I think twenty twenty one, we had a great year. We, uh, met some obstacles with the pandemic, and I think twenty twenty two will be even better, I get stopped constantly by people. Um, raving about what Vetner looks like, what Vetner has turned into, since, uh, imagine Vetner came into office. And I always tell them, it's the team, it's the entire team. Uh, Vetner looks the way it does, Vetner has turned around because of the entire team, so thank you to everybody, and again, I wish everybody a happy and a, more important, a healthy new year. So. Commissioner Kreebel?
I'd like to thank you and the commissioners for my reappointment before we. End this, thank you very much.
Stop with shady.
Keep part of the team. Keep part of the team.
Oh, yes, shady?
No, Maria.
Maria.
I'm sorry.
All right, never mind.
I'm sorry, Maria. Well, yes, the, the, the behind the scenes staff that most of the public don't realize, I mean, you know, yes, they know are wonderful. Talented, educated, dedicated, police, uh, fire chief Cahill, our new police chief Fusner, they're out in public, the public eye, but. The behind the scene, the Lisa, the, the, the Maria, the, the Bill, the Margaret, the, you know, the, um. Jimmy, Al, and Patty in our office, I mean. And people don't realize that they keep us glued, they keep us glued.
Speaking of, of Ed, I, I said he could jump off.
Oh, Ed, how could I forget it?
The workshop, we, he's, he can jump off now, I don't think we have any more questions for him at this point, so.
So it's, um, yeah, the people that people, that the public doesn't see that. In front of them, they're, um, they, they keep all, all of us glued together. So, that's all I have to say, Commissioner Kreebel, do you have anything to say?
Uh, I want to let, let Lance go, and then I'll work into the, um, the next public comment.
Okay, Commissioner Landgraf?
Just a couple of updates, um, as everyone can see, the lifeguard headquarters has been demolished back in December. Um, little late due to some issues with getting across the boardwalk, uh, the pilings are in. The stringers are installed, and they were putting in, uh, floor joists this morning, or starting this morning is when I went by. Uh, that is running a little bit behind schedule, so with Chief Cahill's help and Ed Stinson's help, we are planning. Another option for the beginning of the summer season with headquarters temporary structure, so, uh, we're moving through that. Um, just to, you know, we haven't had a meeting since our, our snowstorm, the foot of snow that we got a couple of weeks ago. I'm really proud of the guys that, in Public Works and PD and the Fire Department, you know, keeping our fire hydrants clear. Getting the roads as clear as we possibly could with that amount of snow. Um, as with every department, we're down people, we're down vehicles, uh, typically, we have eight to nine vehicles that we can plow with, we were at six. Um, the guys worked overtime to get the main drags done, and that is, that is our role, is to get emergency access to as many properties as we can. Um, that focus is on Vetner, Atlantic, Wellington, Dorset, Winchester, and Monmouth, and Lafayette Avenue. And then we try and hit the side streets at least once during the storm, and then we come back and we follow up, that storm. You know, was a heavy snow, a lot of snow in a short amount of time, uh, lasting, you know, most of the afternoon. I, I was really proud of the guys, they did good work with limited. Uh, equipment and limited personnel, uh, but I was just happy when I got to ride through the streets with them. Uh, that night and then see what they were able to get done, so real happy with their work. Um, couple of other things that, that popped up, uh, we did get a grant to help fund the ban shell stage facility at Newport Avenue. Uh, we'll get rid of that rickety gazebo and, and, and build a structure that I think we can be very proud of. I know, Mr. Commissioner Kreebel has been working with, um. With an architect on that project, and we have some really good designs, uh, to get that out to bid as well. Uh, and then the pier gate, uh, we saw plans of that, the old, the second gate out there will be removed. And we'll be putting up a, a smaller kiosk type building that will match the pier house. Um, it will be where the pier master will be stationed, uh, so we don't have that walking back and forth area, uh, and we hope to. You know, open that space up in the pier house to, uh, some type of vendor opportunity, so. Mr. Kreebel can talk about that, that's more his, his bailiwick there, but, uh, and lastly, uh, you know, congratulations to the Vetner Business Association, phenomenal New Year's Day. Just a really great day in the city. Um, wasn't too cold for the plunge, Commissioner Kreebel and I were able to, uh, to get our toes and, and our whole bodies wet that morning or that afternoon. Um, it was, it was a little chilly, but, uh, it was a good day, we had over five hundred people come out. Um, to jump in, in the ocean, New Year's Day, so that was really well done, and in a, in a big party all the afternoon back at Santucci's, so. It wa- it was such a fun day and, and really showed the support of the VBA getting that event back in, uh. In, in the good graces, I mean, it, it had dwindled over the years, and they really did a good job promoting it quickly and getting it done, so kudos to, to Brenda at Mock Darts, Brenda Dow. And, and Alicia Santucci Barbucio, and those guys putting all that together was Herculean effort, so.
I got a pass here Lance, I'll do it next year if I can, sorry, I couldn't do it.
Oh, no, 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 there's, there's no if next year. You, you will be carried in by Commissioner Kreebel and I.
Well, well, you know what?
I understand this year, you get a pass, you get a pass.
Remember last year when we opened the beach, I went out on the boat?
Yeah, that doesn't count.
No, that doesn't count.
Well.
This was full plunge, it was a great, it was a, a great turnout.
With, with, um, about forty three degree water? Yeah.
If, if, if I could have did it, you know.
I know you would have, I knew, I am not, I, I know you had, you had an ankle thing, I, I get it.
An ankle, I have, I have more than an ankle thing, but anyway, so. Um, anyway, but yes, next year, uh, hopefully. It'll, everything will be resolved and I'll be able to plunge.
Gotcha.
That's a promise, and it's on record, and it's on record.
It is, it is.
But Lisa, you can delete that, right?
I'm playing bold.
That's on the record.
That's all I have, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome, Commissioner Kreebel?
Um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll just re, in a way rewind, uh, um, the plunge was a great day, the, the, the VBA is also going to be, it looks like they're going to be reinvigorating the, the tour to Down Beach, so we talked a little bit about that, the, the bike. Um, and, um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to them, um, really, um, turning that, um, turning that VBA into an active group. Um, uh, again, we're having the same types of things in Fire and Police that, um, with COVID, um, that you're having with, uh, Public Works, that, the, we're hoping that. We can dodge some of those bullets in terms of, um, losing, uh, keeping staff, but, uh, Police and Fire are the, as, as Chief Cahill. Reminded me today, that's only, the only two departments that are full-time staffs twenty-four seven, so it's a, it's a bigger lift to keep everybody healthy, so, um, so everybody, uh, um, is sensitive to that. Um, the Vetner Pier, like you've mentioned, uh, yeah, I, I've already gotten some info, some people that are interested, um, starting to, uh, to be vendors on that, so we hope that's ready for the summer. Um, the pier, uh, was a design that really didn't work, it was, uh, so moving the, the gatehouse will be more security for the, the pier fishermen, and there'll be cameras going both directions. Um, so there will be more cameras, and then the pier office that's there will, will be converted into a place where people, we can lease for, uh, refreshments. And envisioning coffee in the morning and, uh, and light snacks throughout the day in the summer. Um, um, and then, um, uh, the, uh, the, 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 one other thing before we get to, what I think most people are here for is the, um, a, a discussion on pickleball, or a, a, is, um. Uh, we did get our signs for Park Mobile throughout the city, so we're going to be, uh, I tried to give them a, a, a deadline to get that in, um, for early spring. Um, so that we can start to, um, to upgrade our, uh, the way that people park in the city, it's a much better system, uh, it's used throughout the state, so looking forward to that. But, uh, about, but, um, it looks like we have, if we can just go into public comment, mayor, if I can, if you would do that.
I just, I just, I just want to add something. Um. As, as you and Commissioner speak, and I've know I've said this before, and you know, when your parents, I'm blessed to still have my parents. With me, and when you're, when I talk about both you and Lance, my parents both say you have two great guys with you. And I just want to say that. You know, I'm a numbers person, so sometimes it's a little boring, you know, you, your, your, your departments. Lance and you, you have the, the departments that have a little more action and activity, but I have to tell you that every time. Every time you get involved in designing, it blows my mind, because I can't draw a stick figure, and I always say to Commissioner Landgraf. Um, as well, his knowledge and, and background in land use and DEP and green acres blows my mind. And, and, and what you do, Tim, and the creativity, it's two areas that are not part of my being, I am a finance person. So, I just want to say, and like I said, when my parents constantly say, you, you have two great guys with you, and I just want to say. That. I'm blessed to be part of the commission with both of you, I, I just had to take that.
Thank you.
Thank you, but back at you with the finance stuff, numbers make my eyes roll.
I, I know, Lance doesn't want to look at numbers like, like, and you guys show me a blueprint, and I act like I know what I'm looking at, and I really don't. So, yes, so we're done with our comments, um, so I'll make a motion to open the public portion, this is a public portion when any, where anyone out there would like to speak on anything. Please state your name and your address, and then speak.
If, if I can, if I could just interject, um, there's a lot of people here for the pickleball, and if, if I could just ask to start with either, um, Pat Harrigan. Um, or, um, Jack, were the two that had initially contacted me, if that's okay with them. Um, about what they had in mind for, uh, their discussion on pickleball, and then we can go in from there.
Okay, great, all right, so do I have a motion to open the public portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it is now open, Jim, do your spiel.
If there's anybody in Zoom who wishes to speak on any items, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature, and you'll be recognized, once recognized. You can, you can turn your camera on, state your name and address, and speak to the commission, I will call each person one at a time, so please be patient, and everybody will get a chance to speak. I have two people who have their hands raised right now, uh, the first one being, um, Jack Feinberg, um, if you'd like to start. I have two people who have their hands raised right now, uh the first one being um Jack Feinberg, um if you'd like to start.
Jack, you have to unmute, turn on your camera.
There you are, Jack. Can you see me? I'll hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, well, the first thing I want to do is thank the commissioners for what Ventnor has become. I grew up in Ventnor in a very different town, uh was away for 25 years over in the Ventnor West in uh Wynwood and moved back 10 years ago. And I couldn't be happier about what Ventnor has become. I retired as a practicing attorney and thought that my future was in golf. Uh, turned out that golf has been supplanted by pickleball. Uh, to let you know my credentials about pickleball, I am one of two certified referees in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I just recently uh refereed at Nationals. Uh, I'm a dual-certified instructor by two different organizations and I served as the primary uh instructor uh in Ventnor Pickleball uh for the last two years. And it's been an amazing growth and what's happened in Ventnor Pickleball really parallels what Ventnor wants to become. There are many towns and I've probably seen in the last three years, 120 plus different pickleball venues. Ventnor is the most accommodating to people learning to play the game and looking to have a social experience. If you wanted to put together a program and make it perfect for people to come and enjoy themselves regardless of their abilities, it's Ventnor. And we get these comments all the time and even down here in Naples, which is where I am now. Um, it's amazing the number of people from South Jersey who know about Ventnor Pickleball and how accommodating we are. And I forgot to mention, uh, my Ventnor address is 109 South Sloughmore Avenue. And I have no idea what that new ramp was that they just built, but we'll talk about that later. What's going on with pickleball is it has become the social outlet for a substantial portion of our population. In Naples, five or six years ago, in the park where I play, we had about 15 tennis courts and six pickleball courts. We now have no tennis courts, 62 pickleball courts, 20 more on the way. Uh, they built a semi-stadium to host uh the United States Pickleball Open, which we have down here, and they're now building a clubhouse with viewing stands. They get over 4,000 people for the eight-day tournament that's known as the US Open. In Ventnor, we started with, thanks to Pat, one or two courts four years ago. We've now grown to having seven courts. We have, and Pat knows the numbers better than I do, something in the vicinity of 450 dues-paying members for the pickleball club and another additional 250 or so on our communication programs. So it's close to 700 people playing, paying attention to what's going on in Ventnor Pickleball. Wow. We have basically asked to convert one tennis court into four pickleball courts. It's somewhat of a small ask when you look at what the participation numbers become. If that's what the interest of the township is or the city is. If you take a typical morning of 8 to 12 P M, tennis players generally play singles. So over that time, you could have two people playing four hours of singles or eight player hours during that period of time. If you took that one court away, you would lose those eight tennis hours. However, what you would pick up by putting in four pickleball courts is 56 hours of pickleball play as compared to just eight hours of tennis play in that same location, only utilizing one tennis court. And you can multiply that if you were to uh see fit to ultimately take another tennis court and what those numbers become. It's social, it's friendly, it's a lot of fun. Uh, and our area is becoming more and more known for pickleball. You have a major tournament coming to the Atlantic City Convention Center in October. Our organization is running a tournament uh in uh May, I'm sorry, in June. And overall, it's a situation where more and more people are taking their social life and really involving pickleball in it. Um, the other thing that's important to note, I, when I teach, because we don't want to utilize the pickleball courts when they're very busy. Uh, we had two.
I wanna, I just want to give you a heads up. We had, we do have a a three-minute per person. Um, so if there's a specific point you want to zero in on, there's a lot of other people waiting to speak.
Sure, and and the point I'll just simply make that, I teach almost every afternoon by 3:30, 4 o'clock. The pickleball courts are busy and the tennis courts are empty and thank you for listening.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Harrigan, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so just to dovetail off of what Jack has said, I do have some numbers that I wanted to share because our current number of membership players for 2021 was 425 people who each paid $60 per membership. And our communication application that we use to communicate with these players on Team Reach has now grown to 726 in 2022. So we've close to doubled our numbers, which we anticipate will double the number of people who will want to be playing at our courts. And as Jack said, with only seven courts, we're only able to accommodate 36 to 45 players at any given morning for 90 minutes on a rotational time. So every 90 minutes, we're rotating, you know, approximately 45 players and there's people who show up and they're not able to play. And they could be vendor residents, they could be vacationer residents. We don't know, but we just know that there are people waiting to play who can't get on the courts. And the evening time between 6 and 8 has grown significantly as well. People are out there wanting to play, families come to play. Um, and we just, we see the need. So that was why I sent out the document, asking you to just hear us out and let us be part of whatever solution comes to mind. We have great respect for the tennis players, for sure. And as Jack said, at any given day, you know, there could be 10 people in those tennis courts and we're still got 45 on our seven pickleball courts. So the the need is is very, is very needy. Um, also, I wanted to mention that uh if we were able to create four permanent pickleball courts out of one tennis court, it would give us approximately 16 to 24 players again, every 90 minutes. People getting on the court, people learning to play. I believe the activity speaks for itself and I'm sure that the commissioners, the mayor have gone by the courts. You see the activity that's there. It's so much fun, it's so social and so many things have come out of it. Not only, you know, our summer leagues that we have and our tournament that we're going to host in June. There's been a lot of social, fun activities at the courts. Um, I I just want to say that pickleball has a mass appeal to everybody because you can learn the game in one instruction and walk on the court and learn to play. Whereas tennis, you really need a specific skill set to learn to play and it's more um, it it's not as easy on the joints in the body. So most of your pickleball players are of all ages, but especially 50 and over when most tennis players have been plateaued at their age limit. They're now migrating over. We have so many tennis players, including Joseph, who used to do the training for all the tennis people. He's now playing pickleball. He plays in our summer league. He's going to play in our tournament. So I mean, it's a lot, a lot of people have migrated from tennis because tennis has declined. They can't get partnerships to play, so uh they're moving over to the tennis.
If you want to wrap, wind it up, Pat, that's the three minutes there.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and happy and healthy new year to everybody.
Thank you. There's other people.
And Howard next?
There you go, start talking. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Howard Hornstein. I live at uh 3 South Sacramento Avenue in uh Ventnor. Uh, I've lived, uh, I've had this house here since 1980. And um, I'm here to vehemently object to taking tennis courts away for additional pickleball courts. Uh, I feel that uh there's a great need. Yes, I understand that there's a lot of people playing pickleball, but I think what we're forgetting is that uh tennis courts and tennis changes lives just as much, if not more, than uh pickleball. I'm going to uh give you my own story. I wasn't so upset when they took away the two tennis courts, but when they took away the wall, I got awfully upset and I still am. That wall changes lives. I have three grandchildren and one nephew, who I took when they were six years old and I started having them hit against the wall to learn how to play tennis. Three of my grandchildren played high school tennis. My nephew went on to play college tennis. If you know anything about playing on a high school team or playing on a college team, it creates memories for the rest of your life. My grandchildren went on to college. They learned how to play with all different kinds of people. They learned how to travel from one facility to another. They learned discipline. And I think you're forgetting how much that wall and those tennis courts changed people's lives. I don't object to all the people playing. I think it's wonderful that all the people are playing pickleball. But I'd like you to take a, another facility where there's not taking away from uh one facility to another. There's a lot of places in Ventnor that you can go to to build tennis courts. And if you think you can pay all the uh uh things that are necessary in Ventnor by getting $60 a person or getting $9 an hour, tennis and pickleball don't pay the budget. Uh, it it will not change anybody's lives if we didn't have either one of them. The taxes are what we pay for. And uh, I certainly think that if you're going to begin to take away other facilities, that think about taking away the playground, half of the playground that the kids are on in Ventnor and let them have a pickleball court there.
I'm gonna, I'll give you the same.
How many?
We're at three, we're at three minutes there.
Okay, you wa- my three minutes are up, okay? And I would like to get involved a lot more any way I can to prevent this from happening.
Thanks, Howard.
Is anybody else on Zoom who wishes to speak? Please use the chat feature to uh recognize your name or raise your hand within Zoom and you will be recognized. I don't see anyone else.
Just, just to be clear, this is not just for pickleball. There's any other comments on anything else? There's a lot of people here.
Yeah, and to wrap up that, if there's, uh, I appreciate all the comments. We'll take them all under advisement. If there's a, a private meeting that wants to take place, we can set that up as well.
Great, okay. Do I have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
The, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have an executive session tonight, am I correct?
Correct. I have, I have one more announcement if I could, Mayor.
Nope. No, go ahead, I'm teasing.
My, my, my lovely uh wife just suggested I remind people that uh we do have, you know, she is trying to put together this hero wall in City Hall. That will, that will show uh all of our active-duty um military. We've kind of picked a location tentatively. Um, we've only had one respondent so far. Um, we'd like to get that back out. I think Kathy's gonna speak with Nanette. I think Nanette's on. I think they're gonna talk and try and put this out in, into the media a little bit and we'll get it back out on social media as well. And now that the holidays are over, uh, we certainly want to honor those that are ac- you know, actively servicing. Yes, this is a little self-serving. Our son is in the Navy, so that uh.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. I think it's great.
Argentina has it and it it's amazing. It is really cool. I was actually in Washington Township um a couple of months ago, right before the holidays in November, I guess it was. And they have, their entire council chambers is filled with uh not only active, but veterans. Uh, pictures, stories, everything through there. It is uh, it's, it's really cool. So this will be a little start and I just want to remind people that if you're interested in it, you can reach out to my office and I will get you in touch with Kathy. Uh, you can, you know, call me at the mayor, at the um mayor's office at City Hall and Patty will put you into my voicemail, uh where you can send me an email at Llandgraf@VenterCity.org.
I think it's a great idea, Lance. I think this can be, uh, since this may be smaller, um, it'll be maybe a jumpstart for us to then do what you said. Um, segue into something, a dedication wall of veterans. Because I, the way I feel about anybody who's willing to uh serve our country, it's such a selfless act and I think whether they're ac- you know, active, uh, especially in the times that we're living in and of course, veterans, they deserve to be recognized as many ways as possible. So I think it's great.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mayor.
Meeting adjourned and happy, healthy new year. Ciao.